Lord God, Provider of all that is good, stir our hearts in this place as well as the hearts of others in our community to continue to work to join hands in serving the people of this town and the surrounding areas to the talents, gifts, and blessings you have given us. Grant your grace and wisdom upon the decisions rendered here by our council and all civic leadership, and that all citizens may support and encourage them in their offices of service to this town. May we give you all glory and honor in all we say and do as a nation, a town, in our families, and as individuals. We pray this with all boldness and confidence, knowing that you hear and answer us for the sake of your Son, our Lord and Savior, Christ Jesus, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Those are words that we can use. Welcome everybody this evening. And we have, we'll start out with the public comment period, and we have Mark Brooks. Hi, Mark.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Councilman. I'm here tonight to represent the Kansas Historical Society, site administrator of the Call Mission Last Chance Store Museums. Some cities throughout the state of Kansas have had partnerships with our historic sites. For example, Hayes, Kansas, at the Fort Hayes State Historic Site is a partner with our agency. And I'm here tonight, instructed by my supervisor, to come to the council to request that the city of Council Grove become a partner of our historic sites here in Council Grove, and mainly to assist in plowing our parking lot and our parking areas, snow plow. Hayes, Kansas takes care of the Hayes, Fort Hayes site, and I'm here to request that from the city of Council Grove. Council Grove is very fortunate to have two historic sites in its city. There's no other city in the state of Kansas that has more than one state historic site. And so that's what I'm here to do today, is request that from the city of Council Grove.
Is there like a formal agreement? How does that usually?
No, I think we can just do a...
Okay.
Yeah.
There's not an obligation thing we saw in, or I mean?
No, I don't think we need to do that, not unless you think you need to.
Okay. I just didn't know if that's the way that it's going to be.
No. But they, you know, they've just taken in as a partnership. Hayes sees it as a plus to have Fort Hayes in their city and to draw people in. I know we've been closed for three years, but we are getting closer and closer to getting our site back up and running and a completely new museum, which we believe will draw a lot of people into Council Grove because it will be a year-round site where it has been seasonal in the past. We will be open year-round.
Your other site is the Last Chance Store?
Yes.
Which is already one of the main snow, snow, snow sites.
Correct, correct, yeah. We would not need assistance there because you plow Main Street and you plow Chautauqua Streets, so... But we have parking along Mission Street, and then we have our own parking lot, which is adjacent to City Alley, which you actually enter it from the City Alley to get to the parking lot.
And this doesn't include sidewalks?
No, no, we're just asking for the parking.
I don't see there being an issue. I mean, it would take less than 10 minutes to do it, so...
Yeah, the shop's within a block and a half of the site, and they have to travel by there anyway.
You know, Mission's one of the roads that we took there pretty much, so...
And it's, not unless the weather patterns change, we're not talking at a lot of plowing here anyway, if historically, if the records show that, so...
This week, your third, do your Friday.
We'll get our storm of the decade, I think, so...
Are there any, like, parking curves or?
Yes, there is. There, in the lot, there are some parking concrete, concrete blocks that...
I didn't know about them. They moved them and put them back, and so I guess we're aware of them.
We still have three that need to be put back that, from some previous work that the city did. But again, no, we're not asking for sidewalks, just, just the parking, so...
Have you been having any other questions? I asked a bunch already. Anybody? And Nick thinks this is fine?
I don't have an issue with it. It takes very little time to do it.
Do you want to hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take care of the parking lot for seconded.
Okay. Moved as seconded to become a partner with the Kansas Historical Society to most, mostly keep the walks in the, or not the walks, but the driveways and the curbs are a bit straight clean there. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And the second thing, quickly, I've released my, I have a series of lectures that we do at the Call Mission called the Call Mission Councils, and I'd like to pass out a, to the council and ask if the city administrator would mind posting that on the bulletin board.
Yep.
Our series lecture is on westward expansion, which is exactly what our two museums are about, and we do a mixture of programs between talking about Native Americans and Santa Fe Trail-related items, since both sites are registered Santa Fe Trail historic sites. And the museum at the Call Mission will be split basically in half. A half of it will be on Native Americans and the other half on the Santa Fe Trail. So with that, I thank you so much, and I appreciate the cooperation.
Would you want us to try to list, try, try to remember to list these on the sign-out side a day or two before?
That would be great.
Do you need a RSVP or anything, not relics from people?
Not really.
No. And it does indicate that the programs will be held at the Call Mission, but until we open, they will be held at the Carnegie Building until we get open. And I will contact the city to, or whoever, Nick, or whoever I need to, to let them know once we open, we'll start holding our programs back in our visitor's center, which is just the building to the north of the Call Mission. But we don't want to have any programs there until we actually open the building.
Okay.
And again, I know everybody continues to ask me when we're going to open, and I wish I could tell you, because I'd like to know. But we're getting closer. We probably have about 80% of the new exhibits in the building, and the Last Chance Store is starting to look more and more like a trading post on the inside. The main thing is now we're trying to hire help and not having a great result from that. So if you know anybody that has a great love for history and would like to work for the Kansas Historical Society, send them my way, because we have a job opening for sure, so...
How many hours would that be?
It's called a 999 position, and meaning you can't work more than 999 hours in a year. And it pays no benefits, and I'm not offering a lot of great things here with this spill here. You know, it would be great for somebody who's retired and is looking for, you know, some, something to do, has a love for history, like working with people, because we will have people from all over the country, from all over the world in our museum, and it's a great, it's a great way to meet people, talk about our history of Council Grove and the state of Kansas, you know, because we are, we are a state museum. We will talk about Council Grove, but we'll be talking about the entire history of Kansas and the Santa Fe Trail, not just the Konze tribe that was located here, but the other tribes in Kansas that were migrated in 1830 to Kansas, which was about 25 or 30 tribes. So we'll be talking about multiple tribes. But the Konze, the Call, will be the rock stars of the exhibit, so...
I wonder if you'll all be just so pleased when you see it. I've seen some tidbits of the exhibits, and it's going to be great.
Yeah, the museum that, for the people that have lived here all their lives, like Larry and some of you others, the museum that, that you saw as a child is no longer there. It was removed in 2019. Every exhibit, every case, every item was taken out of that building, and then three years' worth of restoration work was completed on the inside and the outside of the building. And all new exhibits have been created and are being created to be put in the museum. We donated over 15 cases to the Morris County Historical Society. We donated over 51 artifacts to the Morris County Historical Society. We've gifted two artifacts to the city of Council Grove, which you now have at the Fairview School and at Derland Park. And we, we have one more large artifact that we need to give to the Morris County Historical Society, which will be gifted to them at some point, but it's, it's going to be a completely different animal, so...
What'd you say, 2023?
We'll be open this, 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If not, I'm moving to Mexico. No, we, yeah. We, we will be open. We are way behind. Originally, our, our original schedule was January of 2021, and then COVID hit, and it caused a lot of problems. No state employees were allowed to travel from Topeka. The state architect was not allowed to come to the site, and so I became the contractor who had to deal with all the subcontracting of work at the building. And so it's been a challenge, shortage of materials for exhibits, and, and the script itself, what we're going to have in the museum, took a long time, because we wanted to get it right. And we shared it with the Collination, we shared it with Santa Fe Trail historians, and took their input and incorporated it into our script. So we feel like we, we've got it right, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to have modern things that it hasn't had before, it's going to have screens where you can watch shorts, short videos and films and interactives and things that it didn't have before, so...
That's good. We're, we're excited to have a museum that will actually be open. I mean, historical cities should have museums, so this is exciting.
Yeah, and if I don't get any help, I'm going to have to clone myself, so I don't know how I'm going to run two sites with one person, but, but we're, we're working on it, so...
We have to get those kindergarten kids, teach them, and they can...
Sure.
They're always excited.
Again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay. Before we go to that, it's exciting. Next, we're going to go into the consent agenda, which are the minutes from the previous meeting, the appropriations, the lake cabin transfers, which are none today. And then we have license to sell cereal malt beverages. If people do not have a, an objection, we'll do all of these at one time. Please let me know if you have an objection. They include Raisa Apple Market Pizza Hut, Saddle Rock, and then also the cereal malt beverage for off-permiss consumption for Saddle Rock. So do I hear any questions, objections, or a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a seconded. Okay. It's been moved as seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Six zero. Thank you. Okay, there being no old business, we'll move on to new. The city lake plat proposal, Call Valley Engineering.
Yep, Jason and Chris with KVK are here to go through their proposal and answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay.
Go on.
I'm Jason Loder with Call Valley.
Chris is here with Call Valley.
I guess we'll just start off, if you have any questions. Not sure if you have anything specific we want to touch on.
Can I just go through the proposal, of what it all includes? I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it yet.
Um, yeah, just, just that one.
Well, I know the proposal's kind of brief, just says plating per provided requirements, but what that's going to entail is we would, our proposal includes using a UAS drone to fly it over the lake to get a location of all the existing drives and features out there, take that data, apply it to the existing plats that we did a few years back to, it's my understanding the goal is to dedicate right-of-way for the existing structures there, on the existing roads, and then some common area easements for the existing laterals and all that stuff to kind of make it legal for the people that, to maintain and, and stuff, since it is, but will be, it's my understanding that's going to maintain city property for the lateral structure.
Yeah, and then, you guys, I know you're also supposed to get with Swabe and Stuart Porter to get the water and sewer.
Correct.
And that in the...
Yeah, because the...
You have to make a link for that.
We'll have to, once we figure out, we go along with this, we'll get the plans from them that they have proposed for the location of the utilities, so we can go ahead and show those easements on the plat as well.
So...
Yeah, we'll see.
So those will be city and, county and utility easements, is that correct? Or do we need, I mean?
The county has nothing to do with all of this.
The county does.
Yeah, the property, so we need city easement.
And utility.
Yep, yep. Okay.
How long do you guys figure this is going to take?
Um, since we're using a drone, the actual field work to collect our initial data is probably just a couple of days. But then we have to process all that, generate our property lines, and then it's very time, the most time-consuming on the survey side is going to be to come back out there and set all the monumentation to mark every car. That will probably take two to three weeks, because there are going to be quite a few monuments.
We're talking maybe a month, month?
Is that going to change from a lot that we already have?
So our plan, I'm sorry, our plan was to take the existing lines and extend them in a way to frontage of the right-of-way.
Correct.
I think some lots may increase in size, but the existing lines will not move.
So that the, all the lines that are down at the lakeside aren't going to change?
Correct.
They'll just be the top side?
Correct.
So that, that brings up, so when they do this, you'll have your easement, and then you may have a space in between the easement and where the current plat is, and you guys need to decide if you're, we're giving that to them or if we're charging them for it?
That's a valid question. We could, we could keep the lot size where they're at today and just do a variable right-of-way. Basically, the right-of-way might be 100 feet wide in this area to get to the road, and it could be 60 feet wide in this area, or whatever, but that existing property would maintain a city right-of-way versus increasing the lot size. Or we could increase the lot size to make it a consistent right-of-way or something along those lines.
Okay. He has something he'd like to say about that?
Well, I just want to explain kind of the big picture scope of this whole project when you guys are, if you guys will allow me to explain the big picture of the whole project.
Um, what, can you do that in just a few minutes?
I can do it in one minute.
Okay, let's, let's see what you've got to say. So these guys, well, let's, let's, go ahead, so that these guys can answer any questions.
So I have another question for you. Like, so we've had some issues in the past with lenders and banks, and this will be recognized by anybody that wants to borrow for their property or do an extension or anything like that will be golden there.
Correct. It'll provide a, a legal access to a public right-of-way.
Okay.
So it's not a land law parcel, there'd be no issues there.
Yeah, because the roads right now are considered trails, they're not considered roads, which is where you have the access issue. So it'll make them platted roads that, in essence, the county would now be responsible, should be responsible for. Unless the reason we've been maintaining is because they're not plowed roads that don't meet the requirements of a roadway, so...
So, okay, let's just hear what your, concern your idea, your thought, whatever.
Well, I just, because I've done so many of these in my life, I just wanted to explain kind of what we're, what we're looking at here. We've got to put this plat together, but we really need to do a scope of work with the city, because I know you're doing this for the extraterritorial district, and then we should incorporate the city leg's thoughts about how they think the plat should work, because usually plats are done ahead of development, and this is coming in after the development, so this, there's going to be a lot of questions, and it's going to work 90% of it, just, you know, just on paper, but there's going to be some things where we have to explain some right-of-way decisions, some easement decisions that are going to have to be made through this process. And then the county is, is going to have to bless this plat in the long run. That's, you know, that's going to have to happen. So the, really, the county needs to be involved, the city and the lake needs to be involved in where we're going to get to the plat.
To be honest with you, I can't see that that would ever work. We have not been able to agree on anything, so how are we going to?
So my Bronx. With the original plat, Larry, would we consult with the county?
And the lake?
Ask their permission to platter city property?
No, not for the original plat, for the lake.
It's city land.
It's city land, you're right. You own the property.
Right, so we can go plating along.
But it's, but it's just a piece of property in the county is, is the way it stands right now. So the county is going to have to bless this plat. I, I mean, you guys can, I can do something different, but that's just going to...
Well, I just know that there's, there, this plat might not ever happen if we do that. I, we've gone through so many hours of meetings and trying to get everybody on the same page, and I don't know that that's going to happen. And with this being the, I mean, Brian, you stop me if I'm saying something wrong, but with this being city property, I think it's the city's right to do it as a city fit.
Right, and this is the city's land, and the county blessing the plat really is just a matter of the county determining whether or not these guys did their job right. If, if we're marking the right places, there's, the county doesn't have any reason to, to discount the fact that the plat is bad.
But the county's going to have to acknowledge that there's going to have to be some right-of-way spaces where the platted roads don't work, and there's going to be some grandfathered exceptions out there for garage structures or whatever that are going to fall into that. So a county road has to be 60 feet wide, and so it's what, however you do it, you can do 55 feet of easement on one side and a five-foot road, whatever, you can, you can move it around, but that's how far it's got to be. And when you go to like the point of C and the point of I, you're not, you don't have that room, so you're, we're going to have to stop the road and then make a right-of-way right on the very edge of these roads.
But these standards are what you guys were just talking about, right? When you were talking about those buffer...
So the, the right-of-ways and stuff, yeah, we could vary, I don't, I don't know if the county has a resolution of a minute, the state law's a 40-foot.
Yes, state laws.
Right, but I, I... I don't know if the county has that resolution or not, and we could make, I mean, we could do whatever we have to, because, yeah, that may be, the road's real close to this building, and we could fit that road in a 30-foot right-of-way, we'd just kick that out to 40-foot, and the road may just be on the side.
When I originally talked to you guys, that's what we were talking about. So we could have adjustment on that to...
And we could make it wider to, and stuff like that, to age in place and do that.
So we, we thought...
And that all could happen, and that's going to happen real well on 95% of this project. There's just going to be a couple of things that have to be addressed.
Couple that are odd.
I'm sure that that's going to, that's all I'm saying.
That 5% that you're talking about, though, is going to be in any project that we do anywhere, so we, we need to start moving forward on the things that we know that we can do and we can do right.
And, you know, not everybody's, what I'm trying to say is not everybody's going to be happy, but we need to do the best we can.
Sure.
For everyone. And getting into a few little scurrages or whatever word we want to use here, that's not what we want to do. We want to get this project to go forward.
And maybe another thing we could do is, you know, before we get too far set in stone, we have a sketch plan, per se, put together that we could present, so we could see where all of it is, because we could tell, I mean, when we go out and do the drone and get the roads drawn on there where the roads are, and some of the other buildings that we didn't have on the plat, we could show that even if it's an aerial with the lot lines on there, and then the proposed lot lines, what we're thinking, and then just have it to where we could look at it and have a, another meeting showing all that.
A discussion of...
Yep, a discussion.
Which is pretty much what I was saying, is we just need to do that before they go to their final project, so that they don't have to address comments over and over and over again.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I was...
I have to tell where we're coming from.
Well, it happens, but I think if we...
Yeah, we've, the discussions often are one-sided.
And I might add, just in here, with the concerns of it working most of the time, we were dealing with a lot less expensive real estate in the past, but that, it, so I think it is important to get it clarified and so that people know what they are purchasing, and, so I think, I think that's a concern, just because it's a lot, you know, you can't, you can't touch anything out there for under $200,000 anymore, and so I think that's just the concern of making sure it's clear, you know, when you go to resell and that kind of thing, you want to make sure that it transfers to the new buyer and those kind of things.
Right.
Which Nick was kind of referring to, alluding to about the extra, go ahead, Nick, you were saying a little bit about the extra property.
Yeah, so there's property, so when they do their lines, some of those properties are going to have a space in between where the easement is and where the property lines are currently drawn. And what they're talking about doing is you, they can adjust that or make it so it's a piece of that property and extend that property out or make it just a part of the easement.
Right.
So that's something that you guys will have to decide.
How we're going to handle that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right now, basically, when people need extra, we sell the property, or sell the right of the lease for...
That property at 11 cents.
The square foot.
The square foot, uh-huh.
We're not careful, we're going to be redrafting 150 leases.
No. Yeah, that's what's...
There's only a few that have that actual, like, extra anyway, isn't there?
No, there's quite a few.
There's quite a few.
There's a lot of deals.
There's, there's...
Oh, there's several.
Maybe we'll freeze our lot extensions in any of that while we're in the process of doing this, so we don't have any issues in the future.
Well, I think this is a good time to do this. It's winter time, there's not a lot of building going on right now, so...
And we can cover it in the language to address that. Incap line of the plat to the legally described road can be covered in language in the plat without having, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to put it in the plat.
I mean, for a bank purpose or something, if you don't want to increase the lot, I would recommend just making the right-of-way all the way up to the frontage of the property line.
So I think in a lot of cases out there, it probably makes sense to either give them or sell them that property, because there's a lot of incaps out there that end within five feet of their back door, and it looks like they're taking care of, whether they own 30 or 40, 50, 60 feet, but really they're taking care of it, that's part of actual commons area. So probably what we need to do is see what your plat looks like and see what each individual lot looks like, and then make some decisions about whether we're going to sell it, give it, or, or what that all looks like.
Charge water, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we can make that decision tonight, but...
No.
But we definitely want to see, see that so we can make the right decision for the people out there, and I think they, I think everybody would agree if they want, if they would like to purchase that property for X amount of dollars, we should give them that opportunity at that time.
Because of the right to lease that property.
Yeah.
Right to lease it, yeah. Yeah.
And in our, go ahead.
I was going to say, in our proposal, we have full intentions of this being a multi-step process of...
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're into that scope.
Preliminary discussions.
I think our scope worked within that.
Because I think the best thing would probably be to do is get the, the flight done, overlay the existing plat on it right now, and then maybe I can get it to Nick, to where he can present it to all you guys, and then we could come back down.
That'd be great.
And if we need to have some of the lake people here, or...
You guys are saying the right thing. They're saying the same thing that I'm saying. We just got to show this so that we don't have to go back and do it again.
Yeah, because we don't want to set all the monuments and then everything change again, so...
And it'd be a good time to solidify the incaps and things like that.
Yep.
If you guys fly your drone on Thursday, you'll have a clean white sheet of paper.
Yeah. It won't fly in 50 mile an hour winds.
We don't want to chase after it.
Unless we can adjust our proposal, buy another one.
Let's let some others...
Yeah.
Okay. Going forward, what else? Let's see, we have, we have a fee in here.
It's $39,940.
What sign will that come out of?
Lake improvement.
Anybody else have any other questions? You guys have anything else that you'd like to say?
No, I mean, and you can always reach out to us through him or if you have any questions.
Jason and...
Chris.
Chris, thank you, sorry.
Yep.
Nick, do you have anything to say?
I've talked to them, so...
Okay. So are we willing to move ahead with our proposal for $39,940? Do I hear a motion or any more questions concerned?
I'd make a motion if we move forward and get the properties platted.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay.
On the burner.
I have to don't share, because I prefer a first. I like to do this to even. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Thank you. We look forward to doing this.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Did you see a drone flying around out there?
You'll know what it is, don't you? You'll know what it is, just don't shoot.
If there's anything you all need, just let us know.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing is committee appointment discussion, and this, I just have this on the agenda, Nick and I talked about it, I've been studying the list from last year. Does everybody know what committees they're on right now? Basically, except for you.
I know.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thanks, man, that was a trip.
Safe ride home. The, I'd like you to really think about this, I probably will not appoint these, I'm thinking I might want to wait till the second meeting in January to appoint them so that there's, if there's any concerns or, because there are some things that we're going to work on. I know that I talked to Sharon some about the Santa Fe Trail Committee and the Historic Sites Committee, and we're going to have to, you know, maybe step it up a little bit on some of those. Also, Representative Baker Day has talked to me, he has concerns about the new trail project that we have, that he believes we need to get involved with the Corps of Engineers, and he's got people that are interested in making sure that we get it all right.
I've talked to Gary Kevly, Gary Kevly has.
What did he say?
So Gary Kev and I have talked about this, I sent him what our future plans are, and he's, he wanted that so he can start developing what the Corps is going to do and try to work together on it. That's still a ways out, obviously, because you're dealing with the feds on that.
However, we ought to all be working together.
Right, and we're doing that through Gary, he's in charge out there, so he's the one that's going to have to deal with that. So I've already, we've already started that process of working together on that.
I believe Gary's, I talked to Gary just a little bit about it, and his boss is well aware of what's going on, too, so.
Right. So I mean, we, I've started, those conversations are historic.
And there are several other people that have been involved with this since its inception, way before the Riverwalk was even put in, and they're interested in continuing to visit with what was at one time of the ideas and moving forward on it, so there's some people that are interested. So that's going to be a fairly good-sized committee, so that's a committee, you know, you might want to consider. In fact, I'm not so sure all of us will be involved with that.
I'm well-sitting.
It, it's basically the Trail Riverwalk Committee. Right now, we have a Riverwalk Committee, but we've primarily worked on the Riverwalk Amphitheater just within the city.
Couldn't that group just absorb that instead of making another committee?
Yeah, I think we should absorb that and then add whoever we need to add, because that committee's pretty big already, and it doesn't hurt to add more people, it's going to take a lot of people to get that done and done the right way. So, anyway, but just look at that list. I think what I will do is, I have the list, and I will go ahead and send it out to everybody so that you have the list. I can do that, right, Brian, I can email that list out, I'm not asking.
You can send the email out as long as everybody's not interacting by.
You want, you want me to handle that?
You can if you want, or I've got it.
Maybe list, list together or?
Megan's already sent it to me, but I sent it back to you.
Well, I mean, just as far as putting it together, after, why send something back? So that way we, you and I can sit down, so you can figure out what you want to do with the folks.
I just thought I'd send out the original one so everybody, if they question whether they're still on a committee or not.
Oh, okay.
At to this point, and then if they say, oh, I'm on the Fourth of July Committee, I didn't even know it, I would go on, you know, whatever, then they can, and see what else is available, because there are a lot of committees. Yeah, you guys can look at this, there's a list of the committees.
It's on the website.
It's on the city website.
Yeah, it is on the website.
No, she did.
Well, the last time I, are all those on there? Are the new ones on there, the East Side and, East Side Streets?
No, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not sure that is updated, we need to make sure.
You just have to send them to me and put them on there.
Okay, let's make sure that, I will send that to you. You know, make sure it's on there. Okay, but I'm going to be pretty exact about that this year, and maybe we can even set up some meeting dates ahead of time so that we've, I've got one year left, I want to be sure I organized that last year, so that's mine, don't want to be a short timer.
Your ideas for the Riverwalk.
So, okay. All right, governing body comments, we're down to that. Let's start with Jason.
Looking forward to this holiday season, not looking forward to this week, the weather, but everything, everything was good, I mean, I haven't heard any complaints from anybody in a while now, so pleased.
Good.
Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year, see you next year.
23 already, Denise?
Well, I just, I feel for the guys out there, the city, that, I think it's for the city, I don't know, they've been out there working on things, and I'm thinking, I feel sorry for them, I'm happy they're taking care of things. Thank you for that, Merry Christmas.